Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/fortyninecountynewsTV.
Joe's not with us, I guess he's not feeling well today.
He didn't, he didn't feel like getting out of this bad weather city.
We can give him credit for a bad day to be out, this has been a dreary one today. Just wanted to cover a few things that we've had on the back burner a little bit. First item there, the road closing, I sent Scott Hunt a message this afternoon and asked him to be here if possible. He's on the way back from St. Vincent's, I believe, where he's been with his mother today. She's got off to a bad start here this year and he said he'd been dealing with matters. But he thinks that if we want to go ahead with that street closing, that all agreements we've asked for can be reached with the church. He says he don't see any reason that we can't proceed if we want to do that because, he said he'll get all the details worked out on the matters of extra right away. We wanted that to lower end of the property, that kind of thing.
Now, I read last night where the $400,000 had been given and that the shopping center is going to be purchased outright. So, has Scott worked all that out? Apparently that was just news yesterday or the day before.
Since this closing, won't actually get on that property. We won't be dealing, we'll only be dealing with the church and the people that's in those buildings down there. They'll have their access roads still, but they have now.
The road, it seemed, you looked at it, didn't you? Everybody looked at it. The only time, the only thing about it, it's at the four end, it's too narrow. I think starting out up there, shopping center and all, it's plenty wide enough. But it needs to be six or eight feet down at the four end in that corner, move back so it can turn.
He's not with the officials and they're willing to work with us on that. I just sent him a message and asked him to be here to discuss this and he said he's on his way back from Birmingham and wouldn't be able to get here today, but he felt good about going ahead with it. All the details of the things we wanted to achieve could be done.
We will get that riding though.
Oh yeah, oh yeah.
We won't be arriving at some of the things we're dealing with.
What I said, with agreement, that with agreement right there is the only way that I'd want to go forward in the motion is that the things we've asked for would be in written agreement before we sanction the deal.
Yeah, and they need that road up there too, that's giving them a lot of fear, but they need it.
Item two is just something I want y'all to be thinking about, we're not going to spend a lot of time on it today. I want y'all to think about that, if you could give me any input in the future days. If you want to talk to me one-on-one about that matter, we'll look at the pros and cons. I'm not going to put that on the agenda for this week, but I'd like for us to consider that matter again. I feel like there's some reasons that we might want to reconsider it. Well, I'd be glad to discuss any of those with you more on a one-on-one basis. I wanted to make you aware that if we want someone to come talk to us about Air Med Care, we've got that contract with them where they fly people out of here, our citizens that live in the city limits. They do it as a contract with the city. We pay the contract and anyone that's in the city limits that has to be air evacuated can ride that helicopter based on this contract if they live in the city limits. And families can get a family discount because we have this contract too. We've had it a few years. The price is basically the same as it was the year before, I don't think it's changed any. Twenty-one thousand eight fifty-five is what it cost the city. And this comes up March the 3rd. If I want someone to come and explain the value of this, what we get for our money. Got a little writ here from them concerning our contract, but they might could tell us verbally a little more of these terms and conditions in the contract. If anybody'd like to read it, I'll just leave it on the table. Or if you'd rather have a different representative come.
But how often, this just, how much is this used? Do you know, do we have any records of how much? Has it been used in the last year or what? That's a pretty good bit of money right there, twenty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
They've been several flights, about a year.
If it's, you know, if it's worth the money, I'm a hundred percent for it, you know.
They, you know, several heart attacks and bad recs and whatever.
What happens a lot of times if the air evac is called, they'll have someone in that crew that can actually do procedures such as IVs and things that would maybe prolong a person's life while they get to the hospital too. And, you know, they'll pick them up, as I understand, they'll fly to a location away from a hospital or they'll come to a hospital and transport, depending on the circumstance. So, I think it is a life-saving thing and, as Wade says, I don't have the numbers exact, but I know that it's used every year. We've had a lady contact us last year worried about having to pay and she finally found out she qualified for the service, it was a large bill that she was facing. She really didn't have the funds or the insurance to back it up.
I don't guess it take many times before they want that about twelve, once?
I think it's like thirty thousand.
Yes, I know, thirty thousand dollars a pop, I mean to people.
I used it one time, but I believe, they told me it covered under Medicare.
These people ask for a showing of your insurance so they can file. They don't do it free if there's insurance, but this contract we signed covers you if there's not insurance.
Then you just pay what Medicare would charge. It's not free to the individual even though we pay this, they just get it at a reduced rate.
If they have insurance, does company ask you to let them use the insurance?
What they'll do is whatever kind of insurance you've got, they'll file on it, whatever they get.
But if they have no insurance at all, then they charge you the fee that Medicaid would pay.
Medicaid price, I believe it is.
Right, yeah, so we don't need to give anybody the impression that it's free if you don't have insurance. There is a charge, it's just a lesser charge.
But still, we pay that much each year for that claim.
And it's the only thing that we do that covers everybody in the whole city. It's the only thing that the city does that pretty much we do for everybody in the whole city.
And to say it's free is a misstatement. If you have insurance, they ask you to let, even if they do the work, they ask you to let them use your insurance as a way to pay them what they can be paid. But our citizens are not out of pocket that money and that's a good thing.
Oh yeah, that's many of them couldn't pay it.
Many of them, many of them wouldn't be able to come up with that kind of money. Well, if any of you want a representative to come for renew this when it comes up, we'll get somebody here to talk to us. If not, we'll need to be prepared to renew that contract by March. I don't know what agenda we'll put it on, but we'll put it on one of the agendas. We just wanted to make you aware of the day, so if you wanted somebody to come. Angela, this is not on the agenda, but Angela handed me a list of our holidays that we normally celebrate. I don't know if everybody else.
I put a copy in everybody's office today.
Alright, and we'll need to vote and adopt those holidays for the coming year. If that's in agreement with everybody. And also, we're going to need to consider changing, we got a federal holiday on our second meeting night of the month. And we're going to need to probably move it to Tuesday night because the city hall will be closed on Monday and a lot of people will be.
What date is that?
It's the 21st of January.
Sure.
It's a federal holiday.
But we'll meet on.
I'd like to move that meeting date if it's okay with everybody to the next night. That would be a Tuesday night, 22nd of January. And we'll go ahead and vote on that at Monday night's meeting unless somebody has a different suggestion than Tuesday night. On some occasions, we made it the following Monday night, but if it's not going to misput anybody, we'll just cover the 22nd on that. Rodney, I'd like you to talk to us about the matters of your operators and what's just happened at the plant and kind of, let's talk about the matters that you and I've discussed where operators concerned.
I'm saying you may know or don't know, we lost an operator this week. Tomorrow night will be his last night. He's worked out two weeks' notice, he's took a job with Red Bay as a grade four water plant operator. I've been hearing for the last 10 years that there's going to be a shortage of water plant operators over the next five to 10 years. Let's see it. There's shortages statewide on water plant operators. And this is due to people getting their retirement age, retiring. I have got a list right here of eight pages of job offers. This is through the Alabama Roll Water Association. This is eight pages of operators, people wanting operators. I've talked to several different municipalities. Giewin Water is two men short at their water plant. Winfield's short. Berry's two men short. Fayette's one man short right now. And there's, you can look at these job opportunities on these classified ads and they're all statewide. And what plants are doing, what systems are doing to kind of cover this is they're increasing the pay to try to get operators. What I would like to see happen is to, for us to look at the skilled labor and see where we're at. I've called several systems today. Giewin Water is paying the grade four operators. And this is water and wastewater, I mean, there's no difference. I mean, there's wastewater shortage, it's just like water shortage. Giewin's paying their operators twenty-one dollars an hour.
Are they strictly at the plant or do they do construction too?
Some of Giewin's, I'm not sure. They've got two certified operators now at the plant. And they're running seven days a week, two operators. Upper Bear Creed's is nineteen thirty-five an hour. They're pretty much staffed right now, they're not really any short. Fayette's one man down, they're paying twenty-one dollars an hour. Berry's two men short and they're at twenty dollars an hour. So, they're all right around this price range of twenty dollars an hour, about in there. Right now, we're at seventeen fifteen. That's for a grade four operator.
Did this boy go for a raise or does he live in that one?
Yeah.
What, you know, think we could pay him what he's going to make there and keep him?
He went for twenty-eight eighty-eight an hour. That's what Red Bay's paying.
Their water bills must be high.
They got a twelve dollar now raise to lose.
I blame you, I blame you for that. You took that one, right?
Unfortunately, you know, others in our crew are listening to those dollars and putting in applications at other places too. We don't want to sit here and let all of our good people get away because of something like this. It's really knowing how hard, I believe you said six to eight percent of people taking the test now are passing the test?
Yeah, it's, well, on the waterside, it says it's close to fifteen percent pass rate on the grade four water.
Fifteen percent, so eighty-five percent of people take the test, fail it.
Wastewater's about a six percent pass rate.
Okay, I knew one of them had a lower percentage.
How many grade four operators do we have?
We've got, we did have five, we're fixing to have four.
In other words, that puts you, if you started giving one a raise, you got to give them all a raise.
And I've got, you know, I've got a trainee that we hired at the wastewater plant because I've got one that's going to be retiring this next year down there.
He's already put in his notice. I mean, he's planning it already.
Oh yeah, he's already employed, I mean, we've got him.
We got a man training to take his spot. He hasn't had his tests, he's not certified yet.
Yeah.
So, he's studying to take his test.
But, I just wanted to let y'all know, it's not just us. I mean, this is a statewide deal where they're having a shortage on these operators. And in order, I think we're going to have to increase some pay to keep them. We've got two more that could leave, you know, if they get adopted.
If they live here and want to continue living here, if we make the right adjustments before they accept a position somewhere else, maybe we can keep them here. And if we're in the right, in the right range, I think maybe there's a chance. I always, a hundred percent, there's a chance they'll study.
Did you put any raises in your budget?
I increased it some.
For all seven of them? The three at the wastewater and the, it would have been eight, the eight at the treatment plant?
I think I just budgeted for the increase that they got.
What increase did they give?
Well, the one that y'all have gave them.
No, I mean for the budget that we just passed for this year, did you put anything in it to increase? Were there any raises?
I don't think so. Because I was told to keep my budget as much close to the same as last year as I possibly could.
So, we're looking at seven people? Seven? Because whoever, unless you hire somebody that's already a grade four away from somewhere else, you're looking at a year's training and all that and so you're looking at seven raises right off?
To us, I wanted to also look at the guys that'll be getting grade one at the shop. I think they should be considered some amount. I'm not saying raising them up to what the grade four is, but I'm saying skilled labor would be.
And how many are taking that test?
At least three.
You know, we really needed to know this earlier before we went through. Because it seems to me from what you're saying and what's happening, we're going to have to give them all a raise. And we didn't put that in the budget because we didn't know and probably you might not have known now, but.
Well, I wasn't prepared for it.
Yeah, right.
I wasn't prepared for the man to call me up before Christmas and give him two weeks' notice.
Because we didn't, we could have put it in the budget if we'd have known. And the water bills would have gone up more than if they did.
So, if they want to be transferred to a department.
Yeah. Well, that, take the test and go to school again. But we're going to have to face it. I mean, we've got to help people. Everybody else is paying that, we don't have any choice. I don't, you can't blame them for leaving. I'd be on my way too to that kind of money, you know.
And that's one thing about it, that plant's got to run seven days a week. We've got to produce water for the city for seven days a week.
Rodney pointed out to me today that most of the municipalities operate under a water board, you know, they've got a board. We've got it all under one umbrella where our city runs the city, all departments of the city. We just counted another department under our city umbrella. A lot of the, like the Giewin Water Authority, they were under a water board, you know. Frank Pugh was the chairman of it, I talk to him pretty regularly. He can tell you about their shortage of operators and been trying to hire some and this kind of thing. As a city, we, years ago, we dissolved our water board and brought it under the umbrella hoping it would work better as far as the expenditures and this kind of thing. And we probably, by doing that, we may have affected, have we adjusted skilled operators? We may have just more or less paid based on them being a city employee other than a tested skilled operator. These people have to pass a pretty rigid test and study a good bit to get certifications. Once they're certified, they can go anywhere and work at these places.
How much are we paying? You were speaking of what they left here and got paid, what'd you say, twenty dollars an hour?
Most of them around here are paying twenty, twenty-one dollars an hour.
But what do we pay them?
Seventeen fifteen.
I don't mind that. They'd be making traps too. They'd be paying for gas, but, that's a lot.
Well, Red Bay's pretty extreme, they're the only one that's paying the twenty-eight plus wages. That's where our man went to, he got a job in Red Bay.
If it's three dollars an hour, eight hours a day, twenty-four dollars a day. And for five days a week, that's a hundred and twenty dollars. That's add up to a good bit.
Now, he's happy, how much at Red Bay?
Well, when he went over there for the interview, they told him twenty-eight eighty-eight an hour. When he went, after he told them he would take it, he went back over there one day just for a training period. They told him they'd just got another raise, he would be making thirty dollars and thirty-three cents an hour.
Now, everybody's not paying that.
No, no, everybody's not paying that.
That's a little bit out of the norm.
Most of them around twenty to twenty-two years old.
Twenty, twenty-one dollars an hour. Between twenty and twenty-one.
We don't know if nobody lives somewhere else to like to come home. And that being this.
And you said we were paying what?
Seventeen fifteen.
Three dollars, we're talking about them probably looking at paying twenty dollars an hour in the future. So, that's just what I said, it's going to be a hundred.
And this shortage of operators is not going to go away. I mean, they're just going to keep getting fewer and fewer.
Well, a lot of them don't retire and then they won't be, but they'll leave several younger people. It'd be a good.
It's a good job.
Yeah.
Twenty, it sounds about twenty dollars an hour.
Rodney, did any of the men be able to certify our grandfather in under any clause or all of them had to go through the testing?
All of them had to go through the testing. When I was up there years ago, we were a grade three water plant. And eight of them came in and said, okay, all surface water plants, which that's what we are, is going to grade four. So, they grandfathered us in as grade four operators, but they put restrictions on us. They said if you upgrade your plant or leave and go to another plant, you have to take the test, the grade four test. So, all of us that was up there at that time that got grandfathered in went ahead and took the grade four test and got our grade four certification.
So, you can run the plant?
I could run the plant.
We may be on to something here. What you meant, you hadn't kept your certification up?
My certification is up, but every chemical that we ran in that plant when I was there, we no longer run it. We run different chemicals.
Well, you need to be up there learning.
Where do you go to school?
He's going to start his training.
That's what I said, where's he going?
But this is, this is just something that we needed to put on the table today and just tell you, we're going to be operating with one of our crew gone right away and there's not a certified operator in sight, you know.
And if we are one and paying twenty dollars an hour, it's not going to be just him, it's going to be getting twenty dollars an hour. Every one up and down there's going to want twenty, and I would too.
And the treatment plant.
So, you're talking about a bunch of money.
Yeah. We were trying to discuss the whole operation of the water. You know, we've even had some things on the table here for discussion concerning recommendations of our CPA when we did our budgets of course, our water's concern and so are. And we've noted that Rodney has. And we've, we've noted that Rodney has to have funds transferred in to balance his budget. He's operating in a deficiency. So the city's uh for a long time been supplementing. Of course, the bond that he was carrying under his umbrella has just paid off. But it's still not, the water department's still not at a break even point uh with the monies that we've got coming in. Revenue from our billing doesn't break us even on our operation. So we're still having to supplement. It's not nearly like it was, but Rodney would like to see his operation on even keel if he can put it there.
Did we not vote a raise in on the water and sewer this time? Did we put a raise on it?
We we haven't voted on.
Yet, we talked about it.
Oh, we hadn't.
We were sorting.
My bill went up.
You know why? You're using too much. Stand too clean.
We're sorting out, uh, we're sorting out uh how many commercial sewer customers we've got. Rodney and I discussed that today. He's got us a complete list to represent and we're gonna do that at the next workshop. We're gonna discuss um our commercial sewer rates, our residential sewer rates and our water rates. I just wanted him to lay that on the table today for us to think about and um, our, our budget we adopted has already changed some in that we won't be getting the the five million dollar road improvement. We will not have to put up that one point three million that we thought we were gonna have to come forward with in this budget. So that's out. We didn't get our five million dollar grant. I found that out two weeks ago. And uh so our road improvement grant to connect uh our thirty-five to highway two seventy-eight and forty-three didn't come through for us. So we won't be matching that money in this budget.
The thirty-five, four lane net, we didn't give him, I'm gonna go near the, the station.
We didn't get the money, no. We, we did not get that uh grant. We thought we had a good shot at it, but it didn't come through for us. So, but we had adopted a budget including that million three that we were gonna have to put up, the match, the twenty percent match. That's not gonna happen. So that's gonna help us a good bit in this year's budget.
But this is changing the subject, but since you said that, before I forget, have we heard anything else from the station down there?
Oh.
At the Fulton Bridge?
Our loves?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. It's all, everything's on go. I talk to Scott Hunt about it often and he says everything's still on the front burner. Nobody's changed their mind about anything except putting it in. I did meet with Mills and Kaywoods engineer uh right before Christmas and he says that he's been meeting with the Mr. Shaw and Mr. Wes Fuller concerning a design to help get that traffic out off and on the road that comes off the interstate coming into that new development. They're working on a plan for that to get that road fixed just up to the area where the truck stop will be.
And we're gonna have to pay for that.
Well, he didn't, he didn't tell me that. He just said they were working on a plan with the county and the state.
Yeah, I know it's gonna, that was, that's gonna be a few million dollars.
Um.
You know, whoever.
Not, not that little section. It's gonna be less than a quarter of a mile.
Yeah, but when we, when you come over there and it's, you know, and up to the station, I.
Loves, loves pay for all their infrastructure. They pay for everything that they do.
Okay, good.
Theirs is in a package deal. They don't ask the city for a dime.
That was kinda worrying me about them. I figured theirs gonna ask for a bunch of money.
They've got their own money. They operate independent. All they're gonna ask us to do is share diesel tax revenue with them for a while till they recoup some of their investment. That's the only investment the city will have is a tax sharing.
On just the diesel?
On the diesel only. That's how we discussed it early on with Mr. Gleason.
I had one other thing on the, on the water plant deal. Oh. Can I, would it be all right to hire off the applications that I have as far as hiring a trainee?
We don't have to, that was for the wastewater.
And the shop thing.
Yeah, but don't you figure some of the shop people might wanna go to water treatment? That might not have wanted to go to wastewater?
No. I mean, I could check with, with all departments and find out.
Better ask Scott.
We've got to get somebody hired. We can't operate short handed for a long time.
I mean, it's gonna take a night.
It's gonna be a year, yeah. It's, it's gonna be.
To start as soon as possible training.
They grant Scott Hunt, I, I think we should. Let's, let's just. Uh, let's make sure we do it the right way. Look, if, if he'll sanction it for us, I think we ought to do it. Okay, um Rodney, Rodney, um, let's talk about your department. You've got summer issues. Talk to us about what you need to do.
I need to send two to the academy. Now, this last application that I took in, we took him certified and uncertified. I had a certified one to apply and was on hand, I hired and at the last minute, um, the department he was with decided to give him just a little bit more money, which I don't know how much it was or anything, but he's at the state where he was. So I took my certified one off the table and the rest of them, I think I've got eight or nine uncertified and we've scheduled their agility test for the twelfth, Saturday morning. It's a week from Saturday, nine o'clock. So we'll be testing physical agility test and the rest of them. And ones that pass that physical agility test will be the interview applicants and we'll choose from the ones that pass that test. April is when the next session of Jacksonville State will open up to accept applicants. And we have to have these applicants approved and ready to go thirty days prior to April the twenty ninth, I think it is.
We need to be in high gear on that one.
We're in high gear. We're sending notices out today, as of today, that they'll be testing the twelfth, Saturday morning.
Okay. This, you wrote one of any certified applicants in this group?
Other than the one that I was gonna take and he backed out.
Yeah. Well, maybe you can find us some good ones out of the, the non-certified that we, we can make before these officers out of.
I'm hoping so. Plus, the, the investment there will return back to us because if we send any, anybody to the academy and they fall under that, they've got to stay here for two years. You know, so they can't, you know, do like this and go anywhere else. Have until their two years are, unless somebody wants to buy them from us. And we've been through that before too.
Yeah. Okay. We talked a little bit about the police station having a leak during our last big rain and Brock Palmer's has agreed. We contacted him and he's coming over to take a look at the problem. Rodney don't feel like we need an entire roof on the building. He thinks it's just an area where some where it's re, it was added on to, I guess.
There's a blank space between the roof that's on there now and the old roof.
Yeah.
And it's just right there where you used to come in the water department.
Yeah.
As you're approaching the building, if you'll look where the E part is, you can see like where there was a foyer that came out and there's a gap about this wide that goes in about six feet to the edge of the other building. So that roof was just built and put over the top of it.
Yeah.
By the way, how are they coming on the reg center?
Uh, the roofers are there. I talked to Andrea. Uh, we're supposed to have a meeting over there this morning. Jerry Dyer had a doctor's appointment. We postponed the meeting. Uh, I was gonna go to that meeting and get an update, but she says that once the roof is on, everything will just fall right into place in sequence. She don't think we'll have to have any extra time on the contract.
This weather's tough on them, I guess.
Yeah. They're trying to, the roofers are finally there. All the material for the roof's on the ground over there and they've got ropes around the top of the building and um if they can catch just a few days to play that roof, then everything else will fall into place. The rotten concrete that's, that was uh on the building's totally done. It's been replaced and painted. It looks real good. And the roof is the next big item. But everything else can be done in sequence once we get that roof done. Roofers were somewhat of a delay to us. All right, let's talk on your subject matters now.
I'm gonna ask the mayor and council to, to uh let me replace two of my workers. I actually, after today, I'm gonna be three people short. I've got one out that's had to have shoulder surgery. It's been out for four weeks and he's probably gonna be out another three to four weeks. Uh, I've got one who's uh had some family health issues. Uh, he's been out for six weeks. And I think he's got another couple of weeks left of vacation days and sick days and then he's gonna go on a, a twelve week family medical leave. So I'm gonna be short him and, and of course, I've got one that's taking another job somewhere else. So today's actually his last day, so I'm down three people. Uh, I definitely gonna have to replace the one that's permanently gonna be gone. And I wanna go ahead and hire one with anticipation that the one that's on the twelve week family medical leave is probably, there's a chance that he's probably not gonna come back. Uh, so I'm gonna ask the mayor and council to uh hopefully hire someone Monday night, two people Monday night. Uh, we're just in, we're in this emergency situation. We don't have any, any spare people and I'm short and we're behind. We've got things we need to be doing. I just don't have the manpower to do it.
Have you got the thinking in mind that you want to buy?
I've got applications from the last uh bunch and I'm gonna do the interviewing the remainder of the week and, and have names for the mayor Monday morning meeting.
How were your applicants? How, how were your applications? When did your applications come in?
Uh, within the last three or four months.
Does Scott say okay to hire that quick?
I think, I think you can. It's less than a year, if they're a year, year or newer.
You'd let him be doing a year.
Did you post it in the other departments to see if somebody wants to come down there?
No, that, that may is totally ridiculous.
But that's the way the handbook reads.
The handbook, handbook may read that way, but if they put an applicant, if they wanna transfer, I'm not obligated to hire them. If you're gonna do transfers, you need to let them transfer based on seniority. If you've got a job open in your department and another guy in another department wants to transfer, then it's automatic. He ought to get the transfer based on seniority. If you've got one job open and two, three people put in the application, seniority ought to rule and they ought to get the transfer. That's been my argument all along. If I'm not obligated to hire them in my department, what's the purpose of having them transfer?
And if you have to transfer, then you're gonna have to train somebody else for that job and he's gonna have to retrain for the job as you move in.
You see my point?
I see what you're saying, but I know.
Yeah. The handbook doesn't say I have to take them.
No, it just says that they get first. First, first, first. You hire.
Hire who I want to.
With the, or he hires who he wants to. You don't hire who you want to. He does all the hiring and the hiring.
I understand the reason.
You don't, yeah. But anyway, I just, okay.
It just doesn't make sense. If you're not obligated to take them. Does anybody?
It may, it could be a problem, cause.
Well, it is a problem.
See, then you had to hire somebody and retrain them for the job they're moving from. So you're talking about more than one person.
Yeah.
That you gotta train for another, be training all times.
And I may be wrong. That, that's just my personal opinion.
That's me, I may be wrong too. Still, I don't think, I think you'd run into a sure enough problem when you start transferring.
Angela, do we have something else that we're gonna talk about today? Angela's been doing all she can to get her certification as a city clerk and she's been going to schools right and left as, as they come along and get, doing her training. I'm proud of her for putting that initiative into her job and trying to get as good as she can be as a city clerk. I want y'all to know that she's really taking hold and, and taking interest in our work. Um, Mike, do you and Rodney and Wade wanna talk to us any about our gas cards that we've been looking at? Y'all, y'all wanna give us a little update? We was talking about changing our fuel system up from what we've been doing.
Well, there's not really any, any new things. I think we're still considering doing a card system. There, there's some issues I think that's gotta be worked out as far as diesel fueling and, and those kind of things, but uh uh, we're still kinda just in the learning more about it stage, I guess you'd say. We did.
You were hoping to have a card for each van and, and Amy was illustrating that they'd offered a card per vehicle. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
We'd have done some checking and we, me and him talked about it, about a station that would accept diesel cars.
Talked to the district manager down at, down at the new station.
Yeah.
They gonna ever pump on the front, they're gonna have diesel and it'd be, you know.
Card accessible?
It, well, they're on the front, but I mean, all of them, you know, it's that, every one of them will have a diesel pump. And they'll take credit cards, you know, that, that was one thing we was talking about is finding a place that they, you know, diesel and use a card. So, but they gonna, all of them.
But we're gonna have to specify that it's the diesel like we're using now so we don't run into the same problems that we had with the police cars and the fire trucks because I know the fire trucks had a lot of trouble with the type diesel we were using until we switched over because of the additives or whatever was in there. So when we switch to this new system, it'll have to be specified. Like we bid it, we bid for a specific type of diesel. So when we switch to the card, we'll have to, that card can only purchase that kind of diesel in order to protect the equipment that we're using, right?
Yeah, we're used on-road diesel now. That's all we use. It's, it's none of the off-road stuff. So what he would have available with those pumps.
Is that?
Would be on-road diesel.
Okay, and it doesn't have any of the, whatever was tearing up the fire trucks. I know we had to switch.
Yeah, that was before I was.
Right. We had to switch. It seems like the large chargers.
I think it went from off-road.
They're um.
Sludge, bro.
Sludge. So we had to switch to a different fuel or we didn't, you just got rid of cars?
No, we, we got rid of cars too, but we, we adjusted D go.
That was regular gas. That wasn't, that wasn't.
So I mean, the cards are gonna have to be specified though as to what type gas they use, correct? Eighty-seven, ninety, whatever those numbers are.
I think you could put either diesel, either type diesel you wanted to in there and it's still, it's still, we understood. what I understood, you'd still get whatever the safety of price is on that type diesel.
We better make sure we check with them about that, because the problems with the fire trucks, do you remember that?
I do, but I don't know specifics any.
Yeah, it had something to do with the type of diesel they were using.
I think they did switch it one time from off-road to on-road diesel.
So, so we just need to make sure that, uh, that that's handled. Something about because they see it in the water that's in the fuel, and it clogs something up, and, and we had to make some changes.
Yeah, I, I remember hearing about that, but I mean.
You're not gonna have a sludge problem like we had buying a, a pump with a card.
I noticed the station in Birmingham was shut down a shell. There'd been about twenty vehicles messed up. They quit running almost on the spot after filling up, and it showed how much water in a bottle. Over a third of that bottle's water when it settled out, and.
That was in Dover. Yeah, that was in the years last night.
That was, that was a shell station.
The tanks were leaking, and water, runoff water was getting in their fuel tanks.
Yeah.
It was floodwater that got in the tanks. That, that happened. I'll never know.
Do we know of a, a city around our side sold its own cards like we want to go to?
Gwin.
Gwin, they're on.
Yeah, they're, they're on.
Like Ripley used to, Hackleburg.
Oh, okay, cool. I didn't know.
Phil Kimble uses the same guy that you're talking, Sibley?
Yeah.
Phil Kimble uses a card with Sibley.
That's my understanding with that card, wherever you use it, it's gonna automatically give you the state uh, bid price. Is that right?
That's what I understood.
If that be the case, that's fine. I mean, you know, anywhere you'd have to use it, you get the, because it ain't, it ain't gonna, they're not gonna get the amount of money they got on their sign, you know, when you're using that. It'll automatically.
Calibrate.
Calibrate it and, and put it, you know, charge it out. It's, it's, whatever's on the state bid.
So what's our fee for going with this company to do it?
We hadn't, we, I, we haven't got that. We ain't got that number yet.
Cause there's gotta be a.
Yes.
Some kind of fee.
But, uh, it's gonna be cheaper regardless, 'cause what, what we're paying now is probably what's on the pump bill.
Yeah, it's less, it's less than it's on the.
It may not be any cheaper, but it's gonna be more A D M compliant for your department.
That would help our, as far as that goes.
And I mean, the cost may actually turn out to be the same when you pay for the, whatever their fee is and, and any extra charges. The big deal's gonna be getting A D M not coming to visit you every other week.
That's gonna help us.
That plus that card and state bid price, but what we're paying is a little over state bid price.
Yeah, that's what I was getting.
Yeah, we're hiring the state.
We're hiring the state.
That's what I thought, yeah. I didn't know that, but I thought that it was probably.
The only, the only thing that's possibly be an issue for us is we've got so many pieces of equipment. Not just, not just pickup trucks and dump trucks, but we got heavy equipment.
Right.
Uh, and if we, if we had to put a card in every single vehicle, and I've got three or four different people using that same piece of equipment, naturally, they're not all gonna be filling up. But my chances of that card getting misplaced or, or lost is.
I may figure it out. Put it in the glove compartment, put it in a little pouch. These are grown men. They can handle it. I have confidence in them.
Yeah. I mean, that, that, that could possibly be the only thing I think would be a, only be an issue. But I'm sure we can work through it, but, uh, and, you know, sometimes we'll ha, we'll haul a, a piece of equipment on a truck or something, and you know, you, you got two different, you know, I may fill the truck up and fill the tractor up, and I've gotta switch cards and all that kinda stuff. It's, it's gonna be a little bit of a headache, but any ti, anytime you change, it's.
Don't you get paid for that one? Don't you get paid for that one?
Me?
Yeah.
No, no.
Well, you just get paid anyway. So what difference? You pay for two hours.
There's a slow red light up here. I heard him say, well, I make a lot of money, so.
You know we had one out, I was like, oh, about.
I got it today.
Okay.
Might get some corners, like Winfield or somewhere, on some of this stuff. I mean, you know, as good as they go, we face problems.
Hey, you should ask them, yeah.
I had a call from Mayor Nelson and, and, uh, Fett, and he was trying to get up with Mike. His machine wasn't calibrating right. He was trying to find someone who would put him a meter on their pump, because three utilities, I think, are sharing out of the same thing, and he feels like the city's paying for the book of it. I think the. Our company, the gas company in the city.
He seemed like he, he thought he was paid for two gallons and only getting a gallon and a half.
He was really worried about, uh, the matter, and I put him with Mike. I said, if anybody knows about fueling, Mike will know. So they had a good conversation.
And I had a call today about the corner at First State. When are they coming? It was two weeks the last time we had a work session, but it was three weeks ago.
I can't answer it for them, but it's. There's, the last I talked to him, they were waiting on a camera to come from Tuscaloosa to put down in the, in the pipe to see where it stopped up.
With witnesses present, I hired Estes Electric to go down to the intersections on the our off-ramps and fixing our lights that are out at sixteen and fourteen. We cannot keep those lights burning very long in a time. They're inevitably gonna go out again. I think we had, the state sent me a letter. They'd done a routine, they said a routine check, and I think there was eight out at one place and four malfunctioning and others, so we're trying to get, then we go down there and fix them, and they promised to do it, so we'll see how quickly that happens.
It's impossible to get these two uptown road in with them.
Yeah, we need to. There, main intersection, there's two lights out of there.
And my street light's been out for over six weeks. If your man will flag it, so they'll fix it.
Where?
One-six-four Rice Circle. It's out at the, uh, at the lift station. The square one's out, and then the big one that goes over the road's out. And the big one that goes over the road's been out for at least six weeks, and it has a flag around it, so I don't know if they're just, that is how your man.
There's been two big metal poles at the main intersection up here.
Yeah, they've been out a long time, too.
I'll try to get Amy to call Estes and tell them when they're working on these, come on up here and fix the ones at the main intersection.
Next year, we'll have to reconfigure our Christmas lights. By the way.
Yeah, we've been put on notice. I think the folks in Lamar County got an awakening today to not play it.
They didn't take their staff?
No.
We met the deadline on it.
Our power company was taking them down for them. Made them. They started taking them down today, and the power company made them quit. According to the street superintendent.
The rule they gave us is get them down before the first, or then we'd take them down for us. So we got them down first.
I wonder if one of those things, really and truly, I, I noticed they were down.
We had to take them down under direction. The law changed. We were not ten feet from their wire, and we cannot put anything within ten feet of the electric wire anymore.
Wasn't the first you heard about?
Six feet was the rule before.
That's the first we'd heard about it.
Representative from Alvin Power called me and told me we had to get our fixtures down.
Shop somewhere.
Before the first, the new law came in on the first.
So next year, we'll have to lower them down to ten feet and put them on the.
Max, max pole.
Ten feet away from the wire.
Maybe we just won't put them up.
We're sixteen.
We just bomb them. We're putting them up.
What about a light down at Sibley? Look, they're gonna put another light there.
Yes, they, I talked to him last week, and they was, they told me he was coming to, just past Houston, but they haven't been there yet.
Yeah, we're, we're, that's the first light we're gonna fix, then we'll do the other, uh, what do you call those lights? Not digital, but what are they?
LED.
LED lights will be going up throughout town. Most intersections will have LED going forward. The lights are here. We just don't have them put up yet.
They've had some bad weather down there for his.
Well, thank y'all for coming today. I'm gonna let you go.